All right, are we? We're not on yet, right, are we? Or are we? As we're trying to, okay, technical, everyone's all set. So, welcome to our April 19th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I think I'll start with, I was gonna say, I was gonna say something else, but Rex is already signaling the flag, so let's go there first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we, before we begin the meeting, just wanted to, this is a little different than our usual ones where we have public comment in the afternoon. We are actually having public comment on non-agenda items right at the beginning of the meeting today, so if you are listening to this, this is the time to have already called by using the number that's on the screen and press star nine to raise your hand so that we know you're there. So with that, we'll move forward. I do want to note that Supervisor Madrone is not with us today as he is traveling, so we do more short one supervisor. And at this point, I think we'll go and ask our CIO if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Thank you Chair Bass, we have no modifications to the agenda today.
All right, thank you. So we will go to public comment. I will ask if there's anyone in the audience today who's here to comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you are, you can just come forward. All right, I'm not seeing anybody. So we'll go to those who are on the phone. And I see, I have one caller that I see, 0116. So Ash, I believe that's you, you'll have three minutes. And welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ash.
Hello, my name's Ash here, I'm commenting on the ongoing COVID medical emergency remaining in effect to secure funding despite the overreceiving laws of last week. This continuation of ongoing medical emergency seems like an attempt to merely suprify the door to greater COVID pandemic reaction. I want to get my ask to any future reactions that harm local business through unnecessary lockdowns, violate individual constitutional rights through medical discrimination, or change local norms for extended periods of time be based upon genuine local emergency, not just fear propaganda and illegal mandates at the state or federal level. As I pointed out before, we had fewer total deaths in the county in 2020 in the heat of pandemic before the vaccine rollout than in 2019 before COVID, and then more total deaths in the county in 2021 versus 2020 after the vaccine rollout. Additionally, public records request I made revealed that 72 of the 119 COVID deaths within our county had two or more comorbidities involved, demonstrating the previously alleged notion monetary motivation for medical institutions to relabel standard medical conditions as COVID was the primary cause. Big problem which enabled such behavior is the psychological impact of fear propaganda seen in the national and even our local media during the manufactured pandemic. Beyond simple exaggeration and sensationalisms was as collective reporting have been flat-out lies which have been normalized by the media apparatus and being made legal by Obama through passing of H.R. 4310 in 2012, which essentially repealed the Smith-Mundt Act of 1948 that banned domestic propaganda. A recent example this past week when NBC revealed that the CIA has admittedly been providing false information to the American public on the war in Ukraine, describing the necessity of the practice due to an ongoing information war that necessitates the use of less solid information. Another example of overreaction at state level is the declared climate emergency due to wildfires. It has been made evident that despite receiving federal funding two years ago for clearing underbrush and other forest management projects, the state has not yet completed a single proposed project of the preventive measures. Yet the state demands that this so-called natural emergency dictates that we shift to electrical vehicles by 2035. How are people going to afford this? Please think about this when you listen to-
All right, thank you, Ash. All right. I heard earlier there was two hands, I don't see a hand up.
I've only had one hand that I saw.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I thought you-
I saw one.
All right, so that is our public on, our comment on non-agenda items. So now we'll move forward on the agenda. We have the consent calendar, and is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right, this motion is second. I know that there's a lot of people here who have interests in parts of what's on the consent calendar, so I would ask Director Ford, well, sure, we can go in order, which one you want to read first? We have several proclamations. We're having a celebratory day today, or sad, depending how you look at it. In fact, I think John might just come in. Yeah, I thought he was lurking around the back door, thank you. You tried to not come in, John. Welcome.
Which one to do first?
He's retired, it was hard for him to get up this morning.
All right, well Supervisor Bone's going to read a couple of them, I'll let you choose which you wish to do first.
I'd like to recognize Humboldt Masonic Lodge Number 79. Whereas Humboldt Lodge Number 79 Free and Accepted Masons is the oldest and longest-standing Masonic Lodge in Humboldt County, tracing its history to the early years of settlement on Humboldt Bay. Whereas since 1854, Lodge Number 79 Free and Accepted Masons has sought to advance the betterment of our collective community by teaching the principles of brotherly love, relief, and truth through its fellowship, through the promotion of free thought, morality, friendship, and charity. Whereas Humboldt Lodge Number 79 serves Humboldt County through projects and programs that benefit the lives of those in need and promotes benevolence, equity, and goodwill towards all through its membership. And whereas Humboldt Lodge Number 75 laid the cornerstone of its current building at 5th and G Street on April 22nd, 1922. Now therefore it be resolved that April 22nd, 2022 be proclaimed Freemasons Day in recognition of the contributions made to Humboldt County by Humboldt Lodge Number 79 Free and Accepted Masons over the past 168 years, and in recognition of the Centennial anniversary of the lodge's cornerstone being laid at 5th and G Street Eureka. Moved by, I moved the proclamation.
All right, and we'll take care of that under the consent. What I was gonna, we've kind of switched how we do meetings, so what we'll do is we'll bring these down after we actually go to public comment, and then we'll have them come up then. I'd like, thanks. But, so we will definitely give you the opportunity to speak at three-minute increments. And Supervisor Bone is also going to read John Miller, I believe. He has some super-secret information he wanted to share about John.
Former Fireman of the Year in Ferndale. Who would that? It was a little side bit, I called the Planning and Building Department, I had a question I wanted to ask, and the director says, well, let me call, oh, I can't call him anymore. And he was confused because he didn't know what to do. So one John confused the other John, so. Whereas on March 12th, 2007, John Miller was hired as Senior Planner with the Humboldt County Planning and Building Department and his tenure is defined by his integrity and quality of work. And I'll add his extreme knowledge. John was an integral part of the team writing the draft general plan in 2008, continued to refine the plan and coordinate preparation of the environmental impact report, remaining a valuable part of team through its adoption of the EIR and general plan in 2017. Whereas John demonstrated outstanding research skills for development of the general plan and worked with various communities throughout Humboldt County to reflect community concerns as the general plan was being developed. And whereas John worked with volunteer firefighters to form fire districts and worked to annex areas into existing fire districts to allow enhanced fire protection services to residents in most of the rural areas of Humboldt County. Whereas John showed tremendous creativity and perseverance in developing the regulatory changes in need for the Samoa wastewater treatment project, which when completed will provide the residents of Fairhaven, Fintown, and the Samoa Peninsula with sewer service and protect water quality in the area. John coordinated special district boundary changes with the Local Agency Formation Commission and was a key resource related to the new airport land use plan. Whereas John is the project lead for the ongoing development of the McKinleyville Town Center, introduced the community to state-of-the-art zoning tools to create a more walkable town center. Whereas John served on the tsunami technical advisory panel of the California Geological Survey as well as the Humboldt County's Fire Safe Council to aid in the integration of fire hazard reduction and land use planning. Whereas John, apart from his extensive body of work, always gives 110%, shows kindness, patience, good nature to support those of us fortunate enough to have worked alongside him. Kind of like a gentle giant. Now therefore it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and citizens of Humboldt County hereby commend and thank John Miller for his dedication and service to the citizens of Humboldt County and wish him a long and prosperous retirement.
John, before your talks, because we keep having all this different process, since you are retiring, I will let you speak, but anyone else who is interested in talking about John, or to the resolution, can certainly come up during public comment. But we'll let John come up first, not like you once do, though. And then we'll move on with the rest.
I don't have a whole lot to say, I am recovering from an illness and I'm glad I'm wearing this mask because this is, this is quite embarrassing. So, I thank you all. I learned a lot, I experienced a lot, I worked closely with all of you and enjoyed, enjoyed all of it. So thank you very much.
All right, you will be missed, and I think, I hope you stick around for a little bit. Well, I think some people might want to talk about, say nice things about you. I mean, that's what I'd expect. All right, so anything else we have to talk about on the consent calendar?
Can I, can I reference John for a second?
Sure, I was gonna come back to him too, yeah. Yes.
I want to say nice things about John.
I was just gonna do it after we finished, I went out to public comment.
All right, I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay, I'm just trying to see if there's anything else.
You won't change your mind between now and then.
So, do we have any commenters on the phone for items on the consent calendar?
No, Madam Chair, we don't have anybody on.
All right, well, in that case, I think this is moving faster than we think, so I would let the supervisor speak and then we'll go to public comment. But John, you can come up and, you may want to just sit at the staff table one last time, or, unless you're gonna come back work part-time, no. We can always hope.
Well, I mean, as usual, I don't have anything prepared, but I just want to say that I have known John a very long time through iterations of his, of his planning career. And I, I, I think John's like one of, John Miller's one of the best planners I have ever known, and top-notch, not just a planner, but, and you call him a gentle giant, like, sometimes he does get mad, though, I just want to be really-
I know.
He does get mad, and, and-
I bring that out in people.
Yeah. He does get mad, and, and yet, yet you have to kind of get, you have to be pretty close to know it. Like, you have to be within, you know, a few feet to really, you know, feel the heat when John gets, when John gets mad. But other than that, you would never know. And I just want to say, like, his, his, what makes him a good planner is he understands the value of community and the ecosystems that drive it, and the, and the, and the economies that drive it, and how they interact, and how it all comes together in a way that's compassionate and understanding, and, and with real empathy for all the people that he's trying to work for in this community. It's really, it is just one of those, one of those folks that feels it all and does it all, and works to the, fingers to the bone. And I really, I really appreciate all that, John, I just want to say, like, I can't, I just can't believe you're retiring, because it's hard for me to even, because really my whole life as, in, in the public office, and in even just in, even before public office and working in engineering and planning work, John's always been there. So for me, this is really weird that there will be a time post-John in, in that, and I'm, I don't know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a void, man, so you, I don't know, we're gonna have to see you around more, I think. That's what's gonna happen, I hope.
I'm from Ferndale.
We'll see you around more. And thank you, John, you, real service to our community.
Supervisor Bone?
I got to read the proclamation, so I just, no, John's, and you're right, he's been around, kind of wished he was around when I built the ballfields originally back in the 1990s, but, but he, he does a great job, like you said, he's been through the general plan, through everything else, he was the, and he, the great thing about John, he can, it's kind of like he tell you to go to hell, so you look forward to the trip. Because, because so many times I took stuff to him and I says, hey, can we do this? And he talks to me for five minutes, and I said, so the answer's no, and he says, no, answer's no. So, and, but he explained it, and, and you felt good about it. And, and I think that's all, I think that's all we need to do as a planning and building, is you want to try to serve the people, but if you can't do it, let them know why they can't do it. But he always gave you an option of how you could do it. And so, that's a, that's a rare thing, and it's, and that comes with maturity, age, and knowledge. And it's that knowledge that's gonna be so hard to fill, you know? Big shoes, eh, I don't know. Great big shoes, yeah. But I appreciate everything, John, and I really appreciate the way you respected in Ferndale, with your service to the fire department and, and all the things you do there, so, thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement. I only got to work with you for a year and four months. I really appreciate your knowledge with annexation of the fire departments that we're trying to do. And listening to you and Sabell for the last year, your knowledge is not going to be easily replaced, and the guidance that you've given the fire districts in my, or the fire departments in my area has been instrumental, and they depend on you, and are so sad that you are retiring, happy for you, but sad for us. So I wish I could have worked with you longer and gotten to know you a little better, but congratulations.
Well, and I do have to say, surprise to me, we do have Supervisor Madrone on the line, apparently, we hope you're not driving and listening, is all I'm, right, so Supervisor Madrone?
Yeah, all good, hold on. Yeah, I couldn't miss saying thank you to John. Yeah, from the bottom of my heart, John, thank you for all you've done for Humboldt County, and many crowning achievements on your way out with the fire services ad hoc, as Supervisor Bushnell said. You and Sabell have been instrumental in helping our local fire departments, volunteers and others do more work to increase capacity, so thank you for that, and your incredible visionary hard work on the McKinleyville Town Center. We're gonna miss you, and I wish you all the best, John. Thank you.
And I guess before we go to public comment, and most of it has already been said, but I think you're a real class act, and you will be missed, you know, I don't remember time that I've not been working with you in one way or the other while I've been here, so. We hope you're off to fun things. You hope so too? I hope? Seems like other reason. All right, well, I think at this point, we will go to, we already did public comment on, on the phone, and nobody was wanting to speak on the consent calendar, so now we'll go to those in the audience. If you wish to comment on the lodge or come and accept your proclamation, you can, once you guys get up first, let's have the lodge folks come up first, and then, then we'll go to anyone who's interested in talking about, speaking to John's retirement. All right, so we've got a crowd. Now just so you know, there's three minutes limit, so if you want three minutes each to spread things out, that works out fine. And yeah, Supervisor Bone will take this down to you, as we try to sort through.
Are you all the way down? Hello, oh, is this-
It's on, isn't it? Yeah.
Okay, I am the worshipful master of Humboldt Lodge for this year, and I want to thank Supervisor Bone and the rest of the supervisors for this award. And I see there's a timer, and I think naturally I want to fill that timer, but I will be short.
You don't have to, it's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next person can just file up, anyone else wants to speak on behalf of the lodge? No? Just all happy you're gonna go back about your day. All right, thank you for being here.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so anyone else in the audience care to speak on anything on the agenda such as John Miller's retirement, please come forward. Director Ford, I might give you more than three minutes, but-
I won't need more than three minutes.
You won't fill out, okay.
I could probably talk about it, but a lot's already been said. You know, John is somebody whose shoes can't be filled, we won't fill the hole that he leaves, in all honesty. One of the reasons is because he is such a humble, quiet, analytical individual, and it's amazing that when you walk into a meeting, regardless of who it is, whether it's with California geologists, whether it's with firefighters, whether it's with engineers, whether it's with the public or other agency staff, when John speaks, people get quiet and they listen to him. He is that well-respected and it's amazing to watch. There is a lot that he's done, we've read the things that he's accomplished, but on a day-to-day basis, just his presence, the ability to ask him questions, he has been near the nucleus of everything that's happened, and that can't be replaced. And the other thing that I'd just like to say is that the question I have gotten asked most frequently is can John Miller be assigned to my project? And we won't have that anymore. But we do want to say, John, thank you, wherever you are. You, you go with our utmost admiration and respect, and you've earned it, you've earned it from the department, you've earned it from the public, and we appreciate everything that you've accomplished, and the legacy that you've established for what it is to be a true and kind public servant. So, thank you.
Thank you Director Ford. All right, and what I'd say is, now they're in public comment, well, probably if there's a clapping, we can clap at the end of, or after everyone talks about, like, if you want to. I don't mind the clapping, I'm just trying to not start something and others are gonna want to clap at everything. And I do, we have a due time set, we'll get to that shortly. Thank you. Yeah.
Good, good morning supervisors, it's my pleasure to wish, wish John Miller farewell. On some level, it's just so sad for, for our team, the long-range planning team, but on another level, we, we celebrate what he's given us, and, and the role model that, that will continue, his go-for-it attitude, his, his dry sense of humor, but infectious sense of humor, and just his kind of 360-degree view of how it all works and how it should work, and it's, it's just been such a pleasure. You guys, it, it's been so fun to work with him, I really appreciate you guys supporting our team and John Miller in particular, it's been great working with him, so, thanks, John.
Thank you, Michael. And anyone else who's interested in talking, just go ahead and stand at the side of the room and come up to the podium, so we know how many people are interested.
You go, you go.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm Keenan Hilton, I'm relatively new to the long-range team, I guess, been on there a year or so, but working with, with John has just been fantastic. I mean, it's what, what everyone has said, but the guy, the guy has such a detailed knowledge. I mean, it's like you're talking to a library, and, but then to go along with that kind of encyclopedic understanding of how, you know, county and state and federal and all of the other regulations fit together, you also have someone who I really think his spirit is that of public service, and I think that that's, you know, why everyone has such kind words to say, because this is someone who really, you know, you get the sense immediately when talking with him that what he's trying to do is, you know, make our community a better, safer, richer place. And so, it's definitely been a privilege to work with him, and I'll be very sad, well, I guess I already am sad, that he's not there any longer, and, and yeah, glad to have the opportunity to wish him well in his next steps.
All right, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on items on the consent calendar? Doesn't have to be about John, but, all right, apparently not, so then we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell? No, nothing? We have a motion, we have a second, and all those, there's no issues. Supervisor Madrone, are you still there? Because if you are, then we have to do a roll call vote. I see you still there.
I vote yes.
Okay, he's got a yes.
I'm gonna have, Madam Chair, I'm gonna have to do a roll call anyway, because Supervisor Bone can't get on. Okay, so Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone, I heard a yes.
That's correct.
And Supervisor, good, Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you all for being here. All right, thank you all for being here, and we do have two time-set items that, thank you for your patience in waiting over in the wings there. So as people file out, we'll move forward, we have, the first one is from, comes from Supervisor Bushnell, and this was a certificate of recognition of outstanding public service, and I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, I actually am gonna have Chief Day and Lindsay, Officer Lindsay, come up, and Chief Day is going to present.
Okay, thank you. Good morning citizens, county staff, Chair Bass, and honorable county board of supervisors. So Lindsay and I are humbled, you can come closer, I need some support here.
I'm so used to the sexy thing.
Lindsay and I are actually very humbled to be before the board this morning, and honored at the same time to be able to talk about one of the programs in Fortuna that we're most proud of, and that is our school resource officer program. I'm often asked, you know, kind of what is the secret ingredient with our program? Why does it stand out more than others? And, you know, I think it's a pretty basic answer, it's about having the right people or person in the right job. I mean, if you have people that are passionate about what they do for a living, or what they're doing in their day-to-day, success is bound to follow. And really, the other part of that is just, you know, who Lindsay is as a human being. We can talk all day long about, you know, the importance of healthy relationships or making relationships, but it's what you do in the trenches as far as developing meaningful relationships and, you know, doing something, putting the effort forward to maintain them. And that's really what, what Lindsay has done over the last five years. And at the VFW Award Dinner for Lindsay last week, I kind of talked about some particulars that, in the interest of brevity, I won't go into, but, you know, the general, general idea that I was trying to portray is, we've had several instances over the last couple of years where we wouldn't have known about some of the victimization that we uncovered unless we had Lindsay in the position as SRO. Some of these students were unwilling to speak with anybody other than Lindsay. And again, that goes back to, you know, kind of what I opened with, was meaningful relationships. It's the time and the investment that she puts in as a human being, being a friend, a mentor, you know, a confidant, whatever it takes for our students, our families, our teachers, and everybody that is involved in the development of our children on campus. So, you know, just a couple other things, our programs have really flourished over the last couple of years despite COVID. This young lady would return to work covered in paint, you know, she was heavily involved in beautification projects for our campuses, Pinn-Pow projects for our students during COVID, and, you know, it was just something simple every week. And, you know, eventually those simple things led to something more significant. So kind of a timeline in 2020, I got here in July of 2020, and Lindsay and I kind of hit it off right from the beginning, I think, but, you know, she was already, she already had all these ideas, and, and we would talk about these ideas, and the way in which she implemented them was, you know, with ease, and again impactful for our campus, but she was, first received the VFW Community Service Award in 2020, and that was more localized to the Fortuna, Eel River Valley area. And then her story and some of her kind of benchmark achievement, achievements were picked up by the national- the National Association for School Resource Officers, or NASRO. And that is a national program. She was selected last year out of six states as the sole recipient of the Regional Exceptional Service Award. And then, you know, I was before this board last year when we conferred on her the Department's Medal of Merit. So, just again, very, very proud of Lindsay. What had happened this year was, with the VFW Veterans of Foreign Wars, that local award goes back into a pool, and they look at it at more of a regional level and then at the state level. And so, this most recent award that Lindsay received last week was multi-county. So, it was most of the counties here in the North State. She was, again, the sole selection for that. And I think, you know, just being here today and that final award is really the capstone of, you know, this five-year achievement. I mean, she's been in the role five years and, just again, an awesome human being and being in the right position to serve the community. I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay here in a second. I do want to take the opportunity to thank Measure Z and the Board of Supervisors for historically supporting what we're doing in Fortuna and the Eel River Valley. Some years, it's easier than others. Some years, this board has had to stand against political pressure in order to support us, and that does not go unnoticed. So, without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, Officer Lindsay Frank.
Thank you for inviting me out here, and I am absolutely blessed to stand before you. Last time I was here was about a year ago, and I talked about a foster youth that I worked with that wanted to play football and the impact that I had on his life. But now, five years later, the impact that these students have had on me is indescribable. So, that, the last five years wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for your support, the Measure Z support, and the support from my city council and my chief. They've supported me, and you guys have supported me 100%, and that means a lot, because community-oriented policing and being out in the public and working with the youth is why I got into this job. And I know every officer says that. I got into this because I want to help people, but I do, and I implement that in my routine every day when I go to work, is what can I do to make a difference in the world today? What can I do to help somebody else in their position today? And, like I said, the last five years has been absolutely amazing, and I will carry the memories that I've made over the last five years with me for the rest of my life. And I've been an officer for 13, going on 14 years, and working with these kids is probably the most exciting and most memorable and most impressionable moments I've had in this career is the last five years. So, thank you, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yeah, Supervisor.
Thank you, Lindsay and Chief Day. I just, I've only been around you for a year, and seeing the interaction with you and the students and what you bring to the, the value that you bring to their life is so recognizable. I see you all over Fortuna, and you don't even know half the time I'm waving to, and you wave back, and I know because I'm in different rigs. And you're just so friendly, and going on to campus, kids just glob around you, and that's, that's not the normal in today's world. And so, I really appreciate that you bring a different light to police officers for them. You are involved, I think it's 15 schools, that you service as the School Resource Officer in the Eel River Valley, and you've made a difference to every single student that you've touched. You've made a difference to me as, when I see you and how you interact with the students and your community, and I just appreciate and value what you bring to your uniform and what you bring to our community.
Thank you.
Any other, Supervisor Bone?
Just so you know, there's three Bone Boys in Fortuna just entering. There's two of them are in the school system, one gets, so all three will be in there next year. I don't know if we'll see you up here in the seventh year. No. You've, I mean, this is your third chief, and they all have praised you the same way the last five years. Measure Z, it's a, when you talk about all the way down, and it's a true Eel River Valley position. You're based out of Fortuna, but people, when you look at the big picture and who they can turn to, so it is appreciated. It's not easy, but it makes a difference, and hopefully, we keep that going, and the support of your chief and your council and the valley is, has never wavered. So, you're doing the right job, so thanks.
Thank you.
And before I go to Supervisor Wilson, I'm going, who are you today? I did want to remind anyone, if you're listening to this and you wish to comment on this item, you should already have called in and pressed star nine, and if you haven't done, please do so now, so we don't miss you and your comment. Supervisor Wilson?
Sorry, I wasn't turning on there. Well, I haven't experienced the specifics of your service. I hear about them, and I just wanted to say that the SRO programs and you in particular, I mean, obviously, this is really important within the community, and I want to speak to the Measure Z part of this a little bit, which is, Measure Z was brought in by the citizens, I mean, of the, you know, voted in by the citizens and is probably the most transparent public spending and public collection of funds in the state of California, quite frankly. And so, when we talk about the politics about that a little bit, part of that is, there is a little bit of politics, and actually, that's the healthy part about it in some regards. And I will say that, from my perspective, this has been, these have been positive, this program part has been a positive part of that, and that's a reflection on the work that's been done. So, you know, with you, you carry others, not just students and their families, but also SRO programs and other places, as an example, and I just want to thank you for that.
And I think a lot's already been said, but when do we get to see you next? I'm glad we got you in person this time, though, so it's really nice to actually get to meet you. And you do some tremendous work, and listening to how you care about your job, you can really tell, it's not just words. It truly comes from your heart, and that's really good to see. So, at this time, we will go to public comment. If you, I think we'll start in the audience first. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this item? All right, welcome, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Marie Essig, and I want to, I personally know Lindsay. We have a little joke about we're related in some regards, but I know her well enough to know that part of her success is she's genuine. She absolutely, genuinely cares about kids in all walks of life. And one thing in particular I remember about her, I was talking to her about a child that had grown up and really became very troubled, and I was telling Lindsay, you know, she was such a beautiful kid. She was so, you know, active and did this and everything, and Lindsay said to me, Marie, they all were, and I've never forgotten that. So, she deserves this and so much more. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. All right, I don't see anyone else coming forward, so we'll go to any callers. I'm not seeing any hands up. No, whoops, no. All right, then we will go back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
I would just like to make a motion that we accept the item for recognition for outstanding public service.
Second.
All right. I think we're ready for a vote. Is, I guess I forgot Supervisor Bone's still not up. I think Supervisor Madron.
I'm up, my computer's.
Well, there's a, there's a way, there's a way we can fix that, but I don't see Supervisor Madron on anymore, so, but we still need a roll call vote because we're not all set up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, thank you. Congratulations to Lindsay. Thank you. So, now we're going to move on to our other time-set item that's a little running behind, and this also comes to us from Supervisor Bushnell, and it's a presentation honoring Mary Ann Hansen as Woman of the Year, Senator Maguire's Woman of the Year, and we know how much Mary Ann really loves not attention. But, so I'll turn this over to you, and I think we also do have a special person on the line.
Mary Ann, can you come up, please? Sorry. So, I am the commission seat for First Five, and so I'm bringing this forward, but I actually would like Senator Maguire, who is on, to take the lead.
Good morning. Supervisor Bushnell, it's so wonderful to see you, Madam Chair, to the Board of Supervisors, Madam CAO, I'm honored to be with you. Thank you so much. I want to first and foremost say how grateful I was to Chairwoman Bass, the First Five Commissioner representing the Board of Supervisors, of course Supervisor Bushnell, along with Mayor Seaman, the First Five Executive Director from the state of California, the Chairs of First Five. We all came together last week to be able to celebrate the one, the only, Mary Ann Hansen. And she is the North Coast Woman of the Year, and we couldn't be more excited to be able to celebrate her dynamic, ambitious, and effective leadership. She is one of the few that has ever been selected as Woman of the Year, and candidly, and I think Supervisor Bushnell will agree, there is no one better. Mary Ann has literally dedicated her life. She's dedicated her entire adult life to improving the lives of kids and families. Her belief, her life's belief is simple but bold, that all kids, no matter their background, deserve the very best. Her passion and drive is unmatched. Get out of the way when she is ready to go on an issue. Mary Ann is so incredibly kind. She's empathetic. She's the hardest worker that I have ever met, and she is not afraid to ruffle feathers if it means North Coast kids will have a better life. And I'm especially grateful, I'm especially grateful for her incredible work on behalf of kids who have been impacted by trauma. We are so fortunate to have her at the forefront of children's health issues here on the North Coast, and I got to say, this recognition is so well-deserved, and I'm honored to be able to join Supervisor Bushnell in congratulating Mary Ann Hansen as the 2022 North Coast Woman of the Year.
We know how much you're really enjoying this right now. Not. Would you like to come and say a few words? Or would you please?
Thank you so much, Supervisors, for taking this time. I'm grateful and humbled and just so incredibly fortunate to work in Humboldt County with the people that I do. I have an amazing team, many of whom are here today, who join me in working hard every day, fantastic commissioners, current and present, and just some outstanding community partners that share First Five's goal of putting children first and of holding children as our North Star in every decision that we make. You know, I sometimes think you all, as Supervisors, have one of the hardest jobs, because you have to worry about community safety, behavioral health, planning, the economy, all of the challenges that you struggle with. And my job is easy in comparison, because I just get to say, don't forget the children. Don't forget that children are impacted by every decision that you make, and that it is our investment in our children and our families that will actually make a strong Humboldt in the future. You know, most, much of our Humboldt is grounded in agriculture, and folks know about how important it is to care for the seedlings so that you have a future harvest. And that's how I think about our children, that tomorrow actually starts today. That's, you know, Humboldt's, First Five Humboldt's guiding principle, that the decisions we make today impact what happens tomorrow. And so, that's my request of our community partners, that we continue to hold children central in our decision-making, and then when tough decisions come before us, that we think about, how will it impact the children? Will the families have the support and the resources, and will children have the relationships that they need so that they can thrive and meet their very, very highest potential? So, thank you for everything you do, for all the committed community partners that are here. I can be a fierce advocate, because folks in our community can be fierce advocates and committed advocates, including our policymakers at every level. So, thank you for the recognition and the time and for continuing to place children first. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and I don't leave you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. I'd like to thank Senator Maguire for recognizing you so well-deserved, what you bring to Humboldt County, what First Five and your staff bring to Humboldt County and to the rural areas of Humboldt County. My grandchildren participate in some of the playgroups, and sometimes, I live a little rurally, and sometimes it's the only other kids they see during the week, and so it's really amazing, the programs that are offered through First Five for our children. Thank you for always being an advocate and a solid person in every discussion I've had with you. I enjoy my time with the Commission and find great value and have learned so much. So, thank you again to Senator Maguire, and Mary Ann, thank you and congratulations.
Supervisor Bone?
Thanks for all the books and everything else. Mary Ann, I get to talk a lot, mainly it's about her family we talk about, but, no. Anyway, thanks for everything you do. I think it's well-recognized, and you're exactly right. If we made all our decisions through the eyes of a children, I think I said that 12 years ago, I make all my decisions through the eyes of a child, and I think we could do a lot better across the board, because kids don't know politics. That's why they're so clean and pure and it's so nice, and they know how to get in trouble, but they don't know politics. Thank God.
Supervisor Wilson?
I think children know a different kind of politics. I want to say, I say thank you to you all the time. I just have to say, I'm constantly, and, yeah, it just seems like every other week or so, we're battling one thing or another, and I want to say it is, the children, do you get, any of the programs get a lot of support, but really, the parents, part of that, you know, the kids getting together, or actually, parents getting together, and then the resources for parents, because making parents' lives easier is really also what makes kids' lives better. And providing those resources to our working families is extremely important, and to the families who maybe are on harder times as well. So, yeah, I don't know. I just have, because everyone else is giving you thanks, but I do it all the time because you're freaking awesome. Thank you so much.
Because it's really hard act to follow. So, I'm going to ask Supervisor Madron, who looks, he must be parked again. I don't know. I see him on the screen. His hand is not up. Supervisor Madron, did you want to make a comment? I'm sure he'd like to, but apparently, perhaps he is driving. So.
What I would say on top of everything is, I noticed with First Five, it's one of the few committees that we all want to be on, and, I mean, I don't see that often when we go through our committee list every year, and I know that every one of us has been on, including Supervisor Madron, and so we've learned to share, so that's good, but I think we all have a really special part in our hearts for First Five and the work you do, and I was really happy to be there the other day, and yes, thank you, Senator Maguire, for recognizing this awesome woman that we have in our community.
So, we can go to public comment? There's, I, first we'll go to those who are in the audience, and if there's anyone here who would like to speak on the awesomeness of Mary Ann or on her award, please come forward, and we do have the three minutes. Welcome.
Good morning. District Attorney Maggie Fleming, I want to say so much how much all of us in the DA's office appreciates Mary Ann's amazing work. Her ability to try to change what our children are going through is so critical for our society. We share her views of what's best for our children. With our Child Abuse Services team, we're constantly trying to help them, engage with them, and support them so that they can be thriving adults and get through the trauma. I've also been very privileged to be present when she has made presentations to various groups in our community. The wealth of information she shares, bringing to light the crisis that Humboldt County has with our ACES and our other issues, it's really phenomenal. And she does this, you know, Saturday mornings, evenings, when groups are meeting. And I know, I can't say enough about how much I've appreciated that public information that she's putting out there so that we all know what the issues are and how we really have to focus on addressing them to help our future. So thank you so much to Mary Ann. Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you, DA Fleming. Sean?
All right. Good morning, everybody. Want to thank Senator Maguire for presenting this incredibly well-deserved honor on Mary Ann. I had the privilege of meeting Mary Ann in a past life where I was working in early childhood down in Ferndale. And she helped me out very much personally and professionally there. And then when I started working here, I had the privilege of working with her on policy, which has been more fulfilling than I can describe. As an example of that, we'll be bringing to your board next week a $4.8 million grant program that I worked with Mary Ann and Susan on for ARPA funding, where they will be administering a program to get funding out to the childcare community. And so seeing the work that Mary Ann does day in and day out brings a smile to my face, and I know it brings a smile to her face. So thank you to Senator Maguire and to your board for recognizing Mary Ann in this capacity.
Thank you, Sean. And we have Connie. I know we do have one person on the line, so if you're wanting to speak on this item, be sure to press star nine so that we know you're there. Welcome, Connie.
Good morning, Chair Bass. Thank you so much, Supervisor Bushnell and Senator Maguire, for this. I just can't even, Mary Ann is the Woman of the Year, the Woman of the Decade. I swear, she is a great partner for us. I just, I want to tell a little story. Some of your board attended the Budget Roadshows several years ago where Mary Ann and her team came to every roadshow in every area of Humboldt County, educating the community around ACES. That year, she was funded a half a million dollars and has been funded since then and has done tremendous work in the community because of that. So she's, Mary Ann is quiet. Her voice is low, and when she talks, every word comes out of her mouth is meaningful. Wonderful partner. Thank you so much, Senator Maguire, and thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. Thanks for your board.
Welcome, Michelle.
Hi there. Michelle Stevens, Assistant Director, Health and Human Services. I just feel compelled to comment about Mary Ann's impact on our workforce in Humboldt County as well, those of us that started out working with children and families when she was the Director of the Child Development Lab at HSU. And I was a baby child development student at the time. And I'm almost speechless in thinking about the impact that she's made on me personally, professionally, in my path. And just, you know, when I became the Public Health Director, the working relationship that we forged is like none other, really, for me. And I just really appreciate her mentorship and the partnership and the voice and the advocacy that she gives and brings to prevention. We don't talk about it enough, and so I appreciate that she constantly lifts that up and is always an advocate, and First Five in general. First Five Humboldt is amazing. Senator Maguire, I just really want to appreciate his acknowledgement for Mary Ann, too, because like Connie said, she really is the Woman of the Decade. I don't know that anybody else can compare in now or in the future. So thank you, Mary Ann. Don't retire, please, ever.
Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. And is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this item? All right. We'll now go to those on the phone, and we do have one, and that's 0116.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, yeah, first, Ash Teeter, just wanted to say thank you to Mary Ann and Senator Maguire for all the positive things they do in the community with the First Five. Another thing is, looking at the First Five website, it seems like they are a strong advocate for the COVID vaccines and children. And that seems to run contrary to looking to the future just because there's no real long-term studies on the pact. And you look at like an FDA study.
Actually, Ash, this is more, Ash, this is a little, we'll just stop your time for a second. This is more, that gets a little into the weeds. It's off the topic. I got the attorney kind of giving me the side eye here that I need to have you be a little more towards Mary Ann and her achievement that we're talking here today. Sorry about that, but just wanted you to know, you still have some time. But it's not appropriate to wade that far away from this subject in specific. So you still have two minutes left, though. Did you want to say some more, Ash, or you've done?
Chair Bass, I muted him when you were trying to talk. I've unmuted him now, but he has not unmuted yet.
Okay, Ash, if you wish to use your two minutes to continue on regarding First Five and Mary Ann and the work they do.
Okay, yeah, I just want to say I'm thankful for all the positive things they do in the community. But I know it's uncomfortable, but you know, there is an increased risk definitely found for myocarditis by the FDA.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ash. That's, we're going a little too far, and we're trying to, yeah. Connie Council, you got it, you know, I like, I can just feel when he looks at me that it's gone too far. Nice job, Scott. All right, sorry about that. We have to, we need to fall within certain parameters. So with that, we will come back. I do see one person left in the public that, or someone else stood up in the public? Yeah, and it's just three minutes, please.
Hi, thank you all for, oh no, for the time, for the kind words. My name is Jennifer Magir. I am staff at First Five Humboldt. I work as the Family Support Coordinator for families at playgroups. And I just want to really point out that we have a lot of First Five staff here because we are proud of Mary Ann. We are, the work that we do, it's, we do it as a team, but we do it because we're inspired. We're inspired by the work, by the vision of the agency and the leadership. So I just want to say it's a very well-deserved award. Thank you, Senator Maguire. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for the time. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I think we'll go back to the board now. And yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Certificate of Achievement presented to Mary Ann Hansen for Woman of the Year Award.
I second that motion.
This could be a tough one. I'm not sure what the vote's going to be. But I did want to give Senator Maguire an opportunity, if there's anything else you wanted to say in closing.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. Supervisor Bushnell, thank you for bringing forward this well-deserved recognition on behalf of the county of Humboldt. I'm grateful to be with you. Thank you so much, and we love you, Mary Ann. Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. What? Hold on?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just one, yes. I've lost my train of thought. I apologize. I had something really pithy to say, but no, I don't. Just, you know, I do want to say that being on the Board of First Five is really a true pleasure. It makes, well, I already believed in the matriarch, but now, after being on that board, it is in full force. And I want to say thank you to you and the board. I really, thank you.
All right. Any last-minute comments? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Okay, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Madrone, are you on?
Five times, yes.
Five times, yes. And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, so now we're going to move to another special presentation. Well, a special presentation? I don't like this one. I didn't, never like retirements, but this is a, I'm actually going to ask John Bartholomew to please come up while I'm reading this. And I chose, I wanted to read this one because John reminded me recently that we were in the class of 2011. He had a really fuzzy picture, and we had to guess who some of the other people were being sworn in that day. But after you leave, then there's only two of us left, and we'll all be extinct by the beginning of next year. It's kind of a sad thought when I look at it that way. So Resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt. Whereas John Bartholomew will retire as Humboldt County Treasurer Tax Collector on April 22, 2022. And whereas John was hired as the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector for the county in September 2008 and served as Treasurer Tax Collector from 2010 to the present for a total of 14 years in the department. And whereas John served the California Association of County Treasurer Tax Collectors, also known as CACTTC, as President in 2016-17. And whereas John was an active member on the CACTTC Legislative Committee, Cannabis Committee, Transient Occupancy Tax Committee, and Education Committee, and a variety of committees during his career with the county. And whereas John was a key player in the County of Humboldt's HUM 21 Initiative that promotes leadership at all levels and moves the county toward the goal of becoming a high-performing organization. His leadership, partnership, motivation, and continuous commitment has provided this effort the support it needs to continue thriving. And whereas John was always helpful in working with all parties in the fair and efficient collection and management of various new local revenues and communicating complicated nuances of tax collection law and processes. And whereas John was integral in development of the county's pension policy, pension funding policy, cash handling policy, penny cash policy, investment policy, and the Audit Committee, where he was helpful, informative, and solution-oriented. And whereas John's duties protecting and investing money for the county, schools, community college, and special districts according to state code generated critical interest revenue to provide additional services across Humboldt County. And whereas John's love of community poured from his work and his love of the arts enriched our community. And whereas John was a mentor to all staff in his department, encouraging them to take advantage of available trainings that advance their knowledge in treasury and tax collecting operations to better serve the department and the county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and citizens of Humboldt County hereby commend and thank John Bartholomew for his dedication and service to Humboldt County and wish him a long, prosperous, and active retirement. And I move the resolution. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Chair Bass, fellow supervisors, county staff. It has been a real honor and privilege to be the Treasurer Tax Collector for the county. And it has been the highlight of my working career. And it's been a real pleasure being part of the Humboldt County team. And I particularly want to acknowledge and recognize the staff in the Treasury Tax Collector Department. Treasury, Tax, and Revenue Recovery Staff have been great coworkers, and they do their jobs with integrity, due diligence, attention to detail. And their expertise is very well appreciated. And it's been a pleasure working with them for these years. And Amy becoming Treasurer Tax Collector with the rest of the team that remains, the department is solid, and the future will be bright for the department. I also want to thank all my fellow department heads for the camaraderie and the collaboration that I have been able to enjoy while my time here, during good times and not-so-good times. It's been really good working with such diligent and people of high caliber. And I especially I want to acknowledge my wife for being with me through thick and thin for 37 years. And I really look forward to my, spending my, rest of my life with her in retirement. And I wish all of you the best that life has to offer. And I very much appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
John, you make me wish I had my sunglasses up here. Wow. That's all I can say at the moment. Supervisor Bushnell?
Congratulations on your retirement. When we got the email that you were retiring, I was so happy for you. I've only had a year and a few months to work with you, but I have appreciated your guidance and what you've brought to my position and learning the Treasury Tax Department and your role for the Humboldt County. I have always only heard such good words and admiration for you, how you help your departments and how consistent and kind you are with the community. I am sad not to be able to work with you in the future, but I wish you and your wife so much happiness in retirement and thank you for your guidance during my last year.
Supervisor Bone?
Well, I don't think I can say enough that, I know this isn't your first planned retirement. I know you postponed your retirement to try to get us through a tough spot and have been working towards that with your staff. You mentioned, you know, integrity, excellence, detail of your staff. Well, I think they learned that from the guy at the top. And I think you were always, you rewarded them because you've got a great staff. They, I mean, open through the pandemic, making arrangements, doing it safely. Recently, with an open-door policy. I love you guys' door being open. But the thing is, they're always so friendly when you go in, and that comes from the top. And I know that the idea of staying on a little bit longer, getting Amy ready for her ride, how important that is to the county and to you, but to the county as a whole. And I think that that says more than anything, is your commitment to the county before you left, making sure we were left in good hands. And I, you're a good man, John Bartholomew. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Oh, Bart. I hope I see you around Blue Lake a lot. I already do. So I'm just very thankful, I mean, you've helped me so many times and answered so many questions and been so thorough in responding to everything that myself and anyone, I mean, anyone, has asked of you and your staff. And I just really have appreciated that. And, uh-oh. Are we okay?
There's an alarm going off.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I'm just really grateful in your ability to also do the work to set up the system so when you're not here, it will still function. You know, there's, we have to understand that there's always a world beyond all of us all the time. And recognizing that and helping, you know, set up the systems that help keep our civil society functioning and moving forward, which can be hard on a good day for an institution like local government. And so I just really appreciate you really being in the trenches and helping us do all that. And you're going to be missed. But I'm going to be glad to see you maybe at the logger sometime soon.
CEO Hayes?
Thank you, Chair Bass. John, you've, you've been a great mentor to me and to your staff. You're going to be, you're leaving a hole in the heart of Humboldt County. And your team, your team is the, the representation of your leadership. They don't leave. Rarely do they leave. It's usually retirement that sends them, sends them moving on to new things. And that's because they, they want to be with you and they want to work for you. And they're going to feel a hole without a doubt. So I hope you're, you won't be a stranger and you'll pop in. And we're going to miss you tremendously.
And I want to say you have such an open door policy. It's like, I've never had anyone will say, I couldn't talk with you. I walk in, they're all wonderful and they're, you know, I get let into your room and you don't kick me out. And I've had some, especially the last year, we've gotten to have a lot more conversations lately. And I'm really sorry to see you go. But the team has been set up and it's already successful. And they're not retiring anytime soon, right? Okay, I just wanted to get that on record. You know, and I kept thinking, people think of tax collectors as some evil people. It's like, you're a tax collector with a heart, you know? And, and some of the things you, I have questions I've asked you and you've been patient and you've helped me. It's like, I feel kind of like dumb when I ask them, but, you know, I leave going, okay, I learned something new. And I really have always appreciated, appreciated that by you. And hopefully we'll see you every once in a while around here or two. I don't get to Blue Lake that often. So either that or we'll all have to start going. Special, special meetings with the former.
A center of the universe.
Center of the universe, okay. I missed that part. All right, so I think we'll go to public comment. If you're wanting to talk, if you're on the line and was to speak to the retirement, retirement of, yes, because we're going to type the Treasurer Tax Collector, now would be the time to press star nine to raise your hand. I know there's some people in the audience who'd like to speak under public comment. So you can all just, whoever wants to speak, just line up at the side and come on up to the podium. Not yet, I don't, I'm going to go check the phone afterwards.
Hello. Amy Christensen, Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector. And I wanted to thank you, John, for being a wonderful boss. You taught our whole team to take ownership of our work and to take pride in learning and growing in our roles in the office. We will miss your perspective and encouragement more than you will ever know. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
So when I first came to First Five Humboldt, I had some great mentorship from previous commissioners. And they said, if you ever have any questions, John Bartholomew is the go-to person. And he has continued to be an incredible resource, a steady hand. And I'm just very grateful, John, for the guidance and the work that you've done for our county. And I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Sean?
Morning again, Sean Quincy, County Administrative Office. One of the memories that I'll always remember of John is at presentations, turning the crank. If you guys don't know one of John's passions, it is about Hum 21 and high-performance organizations. Turning the crank is something that John does not do. He looks at the crank and finds better ways to make it work and make it more efficient. And I've been able to work with John, John's been great to work with our office and the entire county on making our cranks turn better. So thank you for that, John. Thank you for all the work that you've done with, with me and with our office and with the county. Humboldt County is better for having you served here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Wayne Hammer. I'm the recently retired Treasurer Tax Collector from Siskiyou County and John Bartholomew Groupie. And John, John, it's a, it's a good gig. You're going to like it. You're going to like it. John is obviously an excellent Treasurer Tax Collector. He's highly respected around the state. But when I think of John, I just think of how kind and humble and helpful he is to his colleagues. John went out of his way to help me put in voluntary collection agreements with Airbnb and Expedia that brought an extra three-quarters of a million dollars into Siskiyou County's general fund. And we were so appreciative, I was appreciative, but to John, it was nothing. And that just is a testament to who he is. It was just being helpful and kind. And I'm proud to call him a friend and.
Congratulations, John. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
And John did way better than I did in front. I blubbered like a babe.
It's not over yet. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Terry McBrer. I'm the Treasurer Tax Collector for Trinity County. And I've known John before he started here. And it's been a pleasure working with him. And one of the things that stand out with, you know, all the 58 counties, he doesn't help or hesitate to help with everyone and just community-oriented and just the resolution-oriented. And so I really appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure working with him. And I also consider him a friend. And it's been a nice being a neighbor to him. And so we'll, we'll miss you. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Terry.
My name is Don Collins, and I met John about 14 years ago through Steve. And you all eloquently stated, he's a scholar and a gentleman. But I had an opportunity also to meet him on an athletic side. And the first time I was invited to go climb Mount Chester, well, it was my second time, but it was the first time climbing with John. I'd met John and I remember talking to the guy that was setting the trip up. And I said, are you sure John's going to be able to go from the bottom to the top and back down to the bottom in one day? And he goes, I think so. And I kind of looked at him and I went, I don't know if that's a good idea. So of course, about 1:30 a.m., we're all getting ready and we all drive up to, I think it's Bunny Flats and take off, and I'm grinding on up. And I guess the best way to describe it is, at the end of the day, I was the pachyderm, just sweating and just miserable. And he was like the gazelle, just sitting up there, just happy as could be, eating a tofu sandwich going, what the, who is this guy? And then I found out he mountain bikes and of course, I've lost a little bit of skin trying to keep up with him. But anyway, John, congratulations. And you've been an absolute just pleasure getting to know and in our lives. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Don. Welcome, DA Fleming.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. I met John, well, I met him before when he was running our Hartford Retirement Program. But then when I first joined County Council along with Scott Miles and former County Council Jefferson Billingsley, he became one of, the Treasurer Tax Collector was one of my clients per se. And what's interesting, and I'm sure I'm saying this to all of you, that one of the most difficult things as an attorney is to give legal advice to elected officials. They frequently take action and then call you later and say, hey, I just did this. Does this sound okay to you? I knew how lucky I was because with John, he would plan ahead. When I would say, well, we're going to need some documentation, he'd open up his file. There would be his certified letters. There would be proof. It was phenomenal. And I, I literally would brag about him to the other deputy county councils because he was so outstanding. When I became an elected official and joined the department heads for the monthly meeting, I was so impressed because John is the same way in everything he does. He's very, very diligent. He's very honest. He has incredible ethics and integrity. He's also very kind. And we have, as a group, struggled. Everyone knows that. John was always trying to bring us together and find a good resolution for our differences and working very, very hard to make sure that we, as a group, continue to move forward and work together. And I have so much respect for John. I am very, very sorry to see him go. But I wish he and his wife a wonderful next chapter because he certainly deserves it. And I can't say enough about him. And I agree with Sean Quincy when he said, he, his being here and his leadership for this county has made this place a better place to be and definitely a better county to work for. So thank you for your time and thank you, John.
Thank you, Maggie. Is there anyone else who wants to comment who's in person? All right, we do have a couple on the phone. So the first speaker I have is 2146. That's you. Press star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes to speak on the retirement resolution.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the board. My name is Jordan Kaufman, and I am the Kern County Treasurer and Tax Collector and current president of the California Association of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors, which is a mouthful, so we just say CAC-TAC. I wish I could be there in person, but unfortunately I couldn't. But I still want to take the opportunity to honor John Bartholomew and thank him for his many years of dedicated service, not only to the citizens of Humboldt County, but also to all the citizens of the state of California. John has been a very active member of CAC-TAC through the years and has passionately advocated for the taxpayers of California. John became an officer on the CAC-TAC Executive Committee in fiscal year 1213 and worked his way through the chairs and became the president in fiscal year 1617. And throughout that time and beyond, he's been a member of the, a bunch of committees. The Legislative Committee, various conference committees, TOT or Transient Occupancy Tax Committee, Cannabis Committee, and a whole bunch more. He's been especially instrumental in working through various legislative issues around TOT for short-term vacation rentals and cannabis regulation and taxation. I also know that John's been a tireless advocate for deferred compensation and pension plan. And is very passionate about making sure that county employees are financially ready for retirement. So John, on behalf of CAC-TAC, thank you for sharing your dedication and passion and knowledge with us over the years. I personally learned a lot from you, as have many other Treasurer Tax Collectors throughout the state. We're going to miss your insight, your wisdom, and your humor. And we wish you all the best in your retirement as you enter the next chapter of your life. And you will always be welcome in the CAC-TAC family. Also, on behalf of CAC-TAC, I want to welcome Amy Christensen to the CAC-TAC family. And Amy, congratulations, and I look forward to your continued engagement in CAC-TAC. It is a great resource, especially for newer TTCs, to gain knowledge and insight on both treasury and tax collection issues. With that, I just want to say thank you to the members of the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity to just say congratulations to you, John, and we wish you all the best. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jordan. And one hand, the other hand we have up is 0326.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. It's nice to say thank you. You spend your life working and doing your best, and you never hear anybody ever say thank you very, or very seldom. It's, now the big reward is not having to deal with all this paperwork and all this nonsense that you have to put up with. I remember Sheriff Cox 39 years ago, he had, he put up with all this stuff. And he had his problem just after that. So take care of yourself and I wish you well.
All right, thank you, Charles. All right. We're going to go back to the board now. That was the last hand up. Supervisor Bone?
I think Maggie hit the nail on the head that you have been, the last few years, as we go through our situations, department head meetings, I know you and I have talked a lot. You've been a calming situation, even in trials of tribulation. I've seen you mad twice, I think, and I'd never seen you mad before. And I appreciate your honesty, your integrity, and your ability to stay above the fray and look what was best for Humboldt County and all the other department heads. And I think that, that says a lot right there. And I don't think I can ever understate, I'd love to have just a little bit of that, able to hold back. But yeah, it's not in my DNA. But I certainly admire yours and, and, and the staff that you're leaving with. You are not leaving our plate empty. And I think Siskiyou, Trinity, you guys coming over, that speaks volumes. That's, that speaks volumes of the respect you get. And I'm not kidding you. God, I, you know, I got to be head of RCRCA. That sounds so boring. CAC-TAC. That, I mean, you want to put that on your shirt. I'm head of CAC-TAC because everybody go, what the hell's CAC-TAC? So, damn, you're lucky, Amy.
I'm just glad now I know how to say it because there's a lot of, a lot of letters there. I just want to, yeah, I hate to see you go. I just want to make sure you're keeping your same cell number, just in case. Maybe. We'll work on that.
He is, but we're all blocked.
I know. All right, any, any further comments?
Chair Bass, Supervisor Madron has his hand up.
Okay, thank you very much. I can't see you. I'm assuming you're stopped at the side of the road again and.
You know what they say about assuming. Hey, listen, John, you have brought tremendous humility to the job. And I want to thank you for all your ability and all the work you've done to create stability. There, it's not quite a limerick, but thank you, John, for everything you do.
All right, thank you. All right, well, I think we.
No other comments?
I think we'll, if we don't vote yes, it's not going to stop you. All right.
Wait, wait, just because you had laid it out there, I just want to say, I went and paid my property taxes there the other day when it was the busiest time. And I want to say the service was excellent from the leadership all the way down through everybody. And there was some, there were some tempers walking through that door. I want to say I experienced some of it. And I want to, your staff, in reflection of your leadership, just without a beat, just, and without, you know, without escalating anything, without, just really, just a professional job in, in a really kind of a tense situation. And, but I want to say that's the norm. I've seen there many, many times. And I'm expecting, because you, because you've just set that ship in that right direction, we're going to see more of that in the future. And that's really, that's really the hallmark of, of your, of your career is really what you've built and how, and how sustainable and, and resilient that institution will be moving forward. I really appreciate it.
All right, Nikki? Okay, Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass? Yes. Supervisor Bushnell? Yes, and congratulations again. Supervisor Bone? And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Motion passes five zero. Congratulations, John.
Thank you all for your kind words.
Thank you, John.
John, I've had a couple of people text me. They want to know when you're going to have your rummage sale for all your suits because they really, you're pretty fancy. You're sure hell not going to need them.
There you go. All right, so moving on to departmental items. The first one comes to us while they're filing out from the clerk of the board. And it's regarding the appointment of Supervisor Bone as a member of RCEA. I don't see a clerk here.
No, good morning, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
And members of the board. The item before you today is to consider making an appointment to fill the open seat on the Redwood Coast Energy Authority Board of Directors. Several weeks ago, our office received notification that Supervisor Wilson had stepped away as the appointed member on the RCEA Board effective March 31st. Since that time, Supervisor Bone as the appointed alternate has been serving on the board and has expressed interest in being appointed as the member. As such, the action before you today is to consider appointing Supervisor Bone as the member and appoint a new board member as the alternate to serve through the end of 2022.
Thank you, Kathy. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's understanding and flexibility in this and that. Looking at my. that, looking at my schedules moving forward, and as you know, I have a lot on my plate these days, both as supervisor and personally, that just the schedule is not working out and I'd already bumped into a few times with RCEA, having to, under Zoom, it was, it was, you know, I was able to really pull it together, but now that we're out of Zoom and I have more duties out of town, as well as some family obligations as well, I just really had to give something, one thing had to go. And I, and so I, I reached out to Supervisor Bone to see as an alternate if he was willing to step in and he said he was willing to do that. And so I'm sad to be out of that particular role because I do think that institution is one of the best, but I, I think that Supervisor Bone will do an excellent job in that role. And so I'm asking that we make this move. Secondarily, I would like to request, and it's just, it's just from my perspective, if we could fill the alternate role with Supervisor Bass, both in terms of sort of the centroid of sort of the issues that are surrounding RCEA these days, but also in that we may see some changes on this board moving forward in the next year. And so I just wanted to, you know, revisit all of that in the context of all of our meetings at that time. It's just a proposal, I'm willing to talk about other options. So those are my, those are my thoughts on that and if you want to take public comment or whatever.
Sure, and I would just, I would just say, you know, that would be fine with me. I had to laugh, it's like, there definitely will be changes because if I'm anywhere, I guess I'll be out in the audience, but I won't be, and I promise I won't do that to you guys, maybe. So Supervisor Bone, did you have any comments you wanted to make? You're all good with this?
I've been on board before.
I know, just. Supervisor Bushnell.
Yeah, so I'll just make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Bone as member and Supervisor Bass as an alternate.
Second.
All right, if you're willing to comment on this, be sure if you're listening to press star nine. First we'll go to the, those in public, I mean, in person, anyone interested in this item? No, I didn't think so, but it was only fair to ask. All right, and there's no speaker requests either, no hands up? All right, then we're back to the board unless there's further discussion, we can probably...
Just want to thank everybody for their flexibility on this.
All right, Nikki, may we have a roll call vote? Yes, Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero. All right, so the next item comes to us from the CAO's office and it's the introduction of an ordinance to amending Humboldt County Code Regulation in Parking in Designated County Parking Lots, and I know this one needs to be introduced by County Council.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Currently before the board is an ordinance of the County of Humboldt amending sections 261.5-1, 261.5-2, 261.5-9, 261.5-10, 261.5-13, and 261.5-14 of the Humboldt County Code relating to the regulation of parking in designated county parking lots.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bass. This item is to make some fairly minor changes to the ordinance. Specifically, we are asking the permitted parking for county employees transition to a laminated placard that will hang from a driver's window. This allows them to transfer them between multiple vehicles. In the past, we had had an affixed sticker on the bumper of a vehicle. In addition, the sheriff has identified a need to modify the fee associated to violation of this ordinance, so it's going to a flat fee of 35 instead of a scaled fee based off of the number of violations. There are some other minor changes, really just making consistent the language throughout the ordinance. So with that, I would ask that your board approve these modifications to the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Supervisor Bone?
Just out of curiosity, do you have how many violations were actually written in the last year?
I do not have that data. I would ask if maybe Karen Clower on the line does, I suspect that we don't, and I would also suspect that it's pretty minimal.
Well, and I'm just saying, if we're gonna go to this, do we need to set something up that it's enforced or...
This allows for it to be enforceable. And if you would like further patrolling of the county parking lots, we could certainly coordinate with the sheriff on that.
Just, if we're going through the motions, there should be consequences to protect the parking integrity of further employees.
I see Karen is on the screen now, if she wanted to add something.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Bass. Now, we don't have a number associated to the violations issued for parking in county parking lots. That's something that we could certainly gather that information. And as CAO Hayes stated, we can ask for additional patrols of the parking lots as well.
All right, thank you Supervisor Bone, did you want to add to that?
Not necessary, I was just wondering if we had the information, I just, fine.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I would just like to make a motion that we adopt staff recommendations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Don't see anyone, no one wants to talk on this item either. And is anyone on the line, Nikki?
No.
I didn't think so, just wanted to check. All right, all back to the board and I think we're ready for the roll call vote. Okay, Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you, motion passes five zero. All right, and I think we're on our final item, this comes to us from County Council, appointment of interim treasure tax collector.
Thank you, Chair Bass.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. As we all know, the current Humboldt County Treasure Tax Collector, John Bartholomew, will be retiring as of the end of this week. California Government Code Section 25304 provides that the Board of Supervisors shall fill by appointment all vacancies that occur in any office filled by elected county officers, except for judges and supervisors. Accordingly, staff recommends that the Board accept the resignation of the current treasure tax collector effective April 23rd, 2022, and consider the appointment of Amy Christensen as the interim treasure tax collector effective April 24th, 2022, through the date on which a newly-elected treasure tax collector officially takes the oath of office. It should be noted that Ms. Christensen currently serves as the Assistant Treasure Tax Collector and is running unopposed for that office in the upcoming election.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
I just wanted to make a motion that we appoint interim Amy Christensen as tax treasurer collector.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. If you're at home wanting to talk on this, press star nine so we know you're there. Go to the audience, was this the item you'd like to comment on? Or you just want to watch?
Yay.
Okay. Okay, yay. Collective yay coming from the crowd. Yeah, so we're back to the board, Supervisor Bone?
Well, geez, to have Chris Ann and Debbie in here, I think the last, last time you guys were in here, you were getting the Child Support Services Woman of the Year Award or something, Deb, so. No, I think this is a, this is a great thing, I can tell you, six, eight months ago, Amy wasn't too sure about this. And, and she stepped up because she's more so than, she can fix the problems because she has the same temperament as John and I think respect of staff and comes from and with a great family, so I'm, I'm excited for this, Amy, and I, and thank you for stepping up. I know this wasn't an easy decision and I'm sure Jackie didn't help at all, so, you know. I, I'm looking forward to it and I think, you know, in another 20 years, we're gonna be saying the same things that we said about John Bartholomew about you, so I'm looking forward to it.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair, Amy, congratulations on the interim and in January, I guess, we'll be the permanent. And thank you for being willing, I look forward as a newly-elected and you being a newly-elected working together and forming good relationships. I'm so happy to see your family, you have the support of your family. I know that, I don't know you well, however, it seems public speaking is not your, you're not comfortable there, I echo that. But I wish you all of the success, I think John has set your office up well and congratulations.
And I, I think, you know, I just have to say, I appreciate your demeanor, I think Rex hit it on the head, I think the office won't miss a beat and you have no idea how lucky you are that you're unopposed. That is, that's gotta be something to celebrate as well, so. I guess, any other comments? Supervisor Wilson?
I think this is probably the easiest job interview I've ever seen.
Yay for that, so. All right, can we have a roll call vote? Okay, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero, congratulations. Well, all right, we'll move, yes, Supervisor Bone?
Amy, knowing how much you like to talk, do you want to say anything or you're just gonna get back to work?
Back to work.
I figured we're gonna get that.
You don't want Debbie to say anything?
No.
Thank you, guys.
Bye. Thanks.
See you, Deb.
Bye.
See you, Jackson.
All right, so we have nothing under closed session, so with that, we are adjourned for this meeting.